Gotta push these on, you guys, huh? Think I pushed the microphone on here.
When you're ready.
Yeah, okay.
Hello, everyone. Tonight, we have a public caucus. PFM is here, Matt Dominies, Eileen Sepriani, Brian.
Brian Solcay.
And Melissa Hughes. And I assume and I believe we're going to discuss the refinancing of our bonds. All right, you can go ahead.
Great. Hi, my name's Melissa Hughes. I'm here from PFM Financial Advisors. We are the city's independent financial advisor. And so, we work with the city every time you consider a debt transaction. And so, the one we're going to look at today is what we call a high-to-low refinancing of one of your existing bond issues. And when we say high-to-low, that just means we're going to take old higher rates and replace them with today's lower rates. We're not going to manipulate or change the structure. Just going to replace those old higher rates with new lower rates. And I put in front of you a copy of our handout, which goes over the transaction, and then Brian can talk about the proposed ordinance, which is the documentation that you all could consider to approve the transaction. So if you want to look at page one, turn it over. The bonds we're considering refinancing are from 2016, and they were called the general obligation notes. They currently have rates of 5% in each of the years. And on May 15, 2024, that is the call date. The call date is the first opportunity that the city has to refinance for debt service savings. It's the first opportunity, not the last opportunity. So if for some reason it didn't make economic sense to proceed, you know, let's say you passed the parameters ordinance, and rates went up, and it didn't make economic sense to proceed. We would just wait until rates came down, and we can do it at any point after that time, okay? Have a little bit about the financing team here for you. And we're still in the process there of getting a credit rating and procuring bond insurance, which is a tool that the city uses to reduce your overall debt service costs. And have a little bit of background information about where the city's credit rating is currently. Right now, you have a triple B minus positive outlook from Standard &amp; Poor's. And that rating is from last year, okay? When we go through.
Did you say triple B minus?
Triple B minus, positive outlook, yep. And so, when we go through the credit rating process, the city will get a new credit rating. And the credit rating agency can do one of three things. They can say, "We like that rating exactly where it is." We affirm the rating. We basically give you the same rating, triple B minus, positive outlook. They could say, "Things look worse than they did a year ago. We are going to reduce your rating," which in this case would probably be taking off that positive outlook, just going back to stable, okay? Or they can say, "We've seen a lot of positive progress over the last year, and we will consider upgrading you." And that would be a move to probably triple B, okay? That would be the next rating up.
So triple B minus is considered an investment grade?
Yes.
Right now? So what would triple B be called?
It's still investment grade. It's just the next notch up.
All right.
Okay. If you start from the top and go down, triple A is the best. And then, we have the double A category. We have the A category, and then, we have the triple B category. So we're moving hopefully up in that triple B category.
If we were to prove this over between tonight, I guess we're introducing, moving at the sixth order, and then hopefully approve it next week in seventh order, that then gives you the window up until May 15 to try to find the most favorable rate?
Yep. And we can go beyond May 15 if we need to.
You can.
Yep.
Okay.
May 15 is the first date. We can do it within 90 days of that first date.
So it's 90 days, gotcha.
That's a 90-day window.
Yep, or any time thereafter.
Ninety days before that.
Ninety days before, any time after.
May 13, go back 90 days, and then, May 13 forward.
Anytime.
All right. Does that window ever close after that point?
Nope.
Not until it matured.
Yep. Okay. And we'll look at a timeline in a minute. Page.
What's the original maturity date, sir?
The original maturity date is November 15, 2032. And that would be the new maturity date, too. If you look at page three, this is an interest rate chart. It gives you a sense of where the tax-exempt index has moved over time. This is not a rate quote. It's to give you a sense of directionality. So something that we find folks are surprised here right now is that even though you're hearing that the Federal Reserve has raised short-term rates, the medium- and long-term rates that you are going to borrow at are still below the 30-year historic average. And that's what that top graph shows you. That red line is that historic average, and the blue line is, you know, where we were at last week when we put this together, okay? And that's where we're at today, too. And then, the bottom two graphs gives you a sense of how rates have moved over time, okay? And this is if you had a perfect credit rating. Just like you or I don't have perfect credit scores, the city doesn't have a perfect credit rating, so you'll pay a spread above that perfect index.
So what's the target rate?
I'm sorry.
What's the target rate we're looking for? I mean, we're at five, so obviously.
Yep.
What's the target?
Yep, so let's move through. We'll get to that in a minute.
Okay.
Okay? So page number four, this is your existing debt portfolio if you did nothing. That yellow highlighted column, the 2016 notes, that is the bond issue that we're focused on right now. You have another series of bonds, your 2016A redevelopment authority that's also callable, but it does not make economic sense to refinance those. So we are going to leave those alone. We're not going to touch them, okay? And then, you have another opportunity in 2027 to refinance your 2017 bonds. Those are kind of your opportunities as they are right now. You have two notes with M&amp;T that are prepayable anytime. So we might come back to you at any time in the future and say, "It makes economic sense to refinance those."
Can you point out which ones on this sheet that you're referring to? Because it doesn't have, oh, M&amp;T. I see the M&amp;T's seven, eight.
Yep, columns seven and eight. So in column nine, I point out that the city's debt portfolio overall is very short, very concise, and you have a really good debt drop-off, okay? So you can see your debt service is more or less the same out through 2030, and then, it, you know, drops off and drops off and drops off, and you're totally done in 2032. And you will still be done in 2032. So page five, this is a summary page of the estimated net debt service savings. So when we show you savings, it's always the net amount of money that we're expecting would be available to you to use for something else. And you'll notice that in this summary page, all the debt service savings are in the first year, okay? That means it's going to be a one-time savings, okay? And what that means is you should take that one-time savings, and assuming we can lock rates in, match it up with a one-time purpose. So not take that million dollars and use it for something ongoing. I'm sure you have plenty of one-time items in your collective.
In other words, don't go out and hire 15 people.
Right.
Yes.
Legacy, yeah.
Yeah. Don't do that. Please do. I mean, a capital project is a great thing to use it on, because those are inherently one-time. Okay? So pages six and seven are the existing bonds if you did nothing. That's what's on page six. And page seven is the estimated amount of money that we will need at closing to pay off those old bonds, because we have to take principal and interest to pay them off. And that's what this analysis shows, okay? Page eight is an estimated refunding analysis, okay? And the numbers that we care about are the ones in column four, estimated yields. So we're replacing those old higher coupons with a new higher yield. So Councilman McAndrew, to answer your question, you know, we're looking for something south of 4%, okay? And how we think about our refinancing and whether it's efficient or not is if you look at that savings as a percent of refunded par, you'll see it's 3.77% of the bonds we're refinancing. We, as a metric, look at, does it produce at least 2% of refunded par? So that's a metric that we look at for efficiency. So this is a pretty efficient refinancing. And the amount of savings that you'll get will vary, will move up and down until the day we can price the bonds and lock in rates. So let's look at the timeline for when that can happen on page nine. So the original timeline we were on was a first reading on February 13. You know, last week it snowed. So we're here tonight on the 20th. Next week is the 27th, and you can consider it in any order or combination you want to. We would get your approval when you're ready to give it. On the administration side, we'd go through the credit rating process and the due diligence process, where we're preparing, together with administration, the preliminary official statement, which is the prospectus document, which lays out important facts about the city and about the bonds themselves. So telling the investors the facts, like which maturities and how much. We could post the preliminary official statement, mean, put it out there for investors the week of March 4, and then lock in rates the week of March 11. And right now, we are, from the behind-the-scenes perspective, we are kind of on that timeline. So that means the week of March 11 would be the first time we could lock in rates and kind of have something to take to the bank in terms of how much savings that there is. And that means that the week of April 15 would be when the bonds would settle. Your old bonds would be paid off and replaced with your new bonds, okay? In the ordinance that Brian has prepared, there is what's called a maximum parameters schedule. So if you go to page 11, or one of my pages is in his document. And so, what this maximum parameters schedule represents, so DCED allows us to consider what's called a parameters ordinance. And it asks us, as the financing team, to lay out a maximum principal amount per maturity and a maximum rate. Those amounts are going to be higher than we anticipate to allow us the flexibility based on, you know, we don't know what the coupon is going to look like at the time when we go in to lock in the rates, because there necessarily has to be a time lag between when you approve it and when we can be in the market. So it is higher than we anticipate, and it's to give us that flexibility. We can't, we don't have the authorization to issue more bonds than is necessary to complete the refunding program, okay? We can't overissue.
And buried in that ordinance are two really important points. The ordinance only authorizes the refunding of this one particular series, and we can only complete the transaction if there's debt service savings. So even though these numbers in the parameters are higher than we could do, we cannot complete it without actual debt service savings, as you've seen in the numbers. So it really just gives us that opportunity to go through the reading process, do the advertising that we need to, send it to the state for their review. They have a 30-day review period. So that's why we kind of back into, okay, if we have first reading tonight, second and third next week, file it with the state after we get the second proof of publication. They have that 30 days, and that puts us towards the end of March as really the earliest time that we could close. And that's the schedule that we've kind of baked in right now, pricing the bonds and being able to close in the beginning of April. So that's what leads to that schedule.
Is there a chance that the savings can fluctuate?
Yes. They will fluctuate until the day we price the bonds. At the time we price the bonds with the underwriter, that's the day when the savings are locked in.
Well, at what point do we determine savings only $200,000?
Yep.
Do you really want to do it?
So we would work with the administration, and we wouldn't do the refinancing if it didn't make economic sense. So we're looking to hit that 2% benchmark.
So, I mean, the 2% benchmark would be 3%. And what we have here is a 3.77, correct? The estimates that you're given for the 1.178 savings is 3.77. So it's not at a, say, 2% benchmark.
You're in excess. You're saving more than the benchmark.
Okay.
Right now.
Now, you're looking at a date to try to close that in April, correct?
Yep.
And is this when you think the rates will be at their lowest, is April?
We think that, so there's kind of two questions there, and I'm going to split it out and answer.
I mean, you're projecting to try to get what's going to be the lowest rate? But is that, that's the month we think it's going to be the lowest, or in and around there?
We think that that's a good time to be in the market, yes.
Do we see them not going any lower? We think they're going to be rising into the future, or?
So there's kind of two components to rates. There's short-term rates, and then, there's long-term rates. So we hear about how the Federal Reserve, over the course of this year, might lower short-term rates, those years in, rates in year one and two. The long-term rates already have most of that baked in. So the, like, kind of 10-year rate that we're going to be borrowing at, the market has a lot of that priced in already, that expectation.
So you think this is about it?
Yeah.
Okay.
We think that the curve will change shape, essentially.
But you think this is about as far down as we're going?
Based on what we know right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are we shooting for 3.77, and if it comes anywhere higher than that, it's a no-go?
No, higher is good. Higher is good, lower is bad.
Yeah, and that's not, that's not the true interest rate on the new debt. That's just the percentage of savings on the overall size of the issue, the original issue. So that's why that's a much, that's better than the 2%. Your rate's not 2%.
Gotcha. Okay, so what actual rate are we looking at? So that's if we're, that's 3.77.
They're really close, and that's why you're confused. I.
Yeah, now I get what you're saying, so.
Yeah. So right now, the average rate that's in the numbers is about 3.88%. So anything lower than that rate would be more savings to us.
So what, so what is that rate?
Can we actually do better with our savings? Can we actually, is there a possibility we can do better with our savings?
Yeah. In fact, if you were priced, this is a little bit conservative. If you, if we'd have priced the bonds today, you would have done a little bit better than this. But we have a lot of interest rate risk between now and, you know, a month from now, basically.
So do we, the question I was getting to is, do we have a number where it doesn't make sense, and what is that number?
Yeah, we would look to save at least 2% of the refunded bond issue. So we'd look to save at least about $600,000.
Okay. Well, you wouldn't be sitting in front of us if you didn't think you could do it.
Exactly. Yep.
Right?
Yep.
I would hope so.
Because there are a lot of costs and expenses, just to get to this point. We were saying, the first step, you have the first reading. But before we can do the final reading, there's a first ad that has to go in the paper that should be in on Thursday. That's a $1,500 ad, and then, there's a second one. So you'd start to accumulate costs at this point. You have a rating agency cost that will be filled in already. So you don't want to start this process unless you think you can get there. Now, things can change, but.
We feel good right now.
Brian, the fact that we're considering doing this, refinancing this bond, will that have a positive effect on our future S&amp;P rating because we're making wise financial decisions?
Yes. Yes. The rating agency likes when any issuer, like yourselves, is being proactive and thinking long-term. And they'll especially, you know, I talked about this when we talked about the savings. But being able to say, "Yes, and counsel has thought about it and will use any savings towards a one-time purpose," is a good message. It shows that you all are thinking strategically and matching, you know, one-time sources with one-time uses, which is something that they care about. And it's something that the city has historically gotten some negative feedback from S&amp;P about, you know, back in the day, right?
Do we have a finalized fee schedule?
Not as it sits right now, because some of the costs we're still working on procuring. In particular, bond insurance and credit rating, those aren't available yet.
Are we going to know what the final cost is on that fee schedule? And what's the earliest date we'll know that?
Good question. We won't know until after we get the credit rating. It'll be in about two weeks, I would think.
Yeah, we're meeting with S&amp;P next week.
Yeah. And then, they usually need a week after that.
Eileen, when was the last time our S&amp;P rating was done? Was it December, November?
We issued it in June.
Oh, in June is when we got the triple B minus, okay. How, like, do they typically go a full year with eight, 10 months?
So usually, so most issuers don't get a rating every year. Historically, the city, since you re-entered the credit rating market in 2016, the city has gotten a new rating every year because you've made a lot of progress every year. So we expect over time, it'll slow down, and you'll get a new credit rating when there are big moves in your creditworthiness, or when you do a transaction.
Do we expect our credit, now, what month are we going to get a new credit rating? Are we looking, that June will be the new one?
February. We're going to get one at the end of February, first week of March.
It's redone as part of this operating.
Yep. So you'll have a fresh credit rating.
So it's included in the refinancing?
It's including, and it's included in the refinancing. And Councilman Schuster's question is part of the, we need to get the credit rating to get the credit rating final fee, and we need the credit rating to determine the cost of the bond insurance. But we have some estimates, some conservative estimates built in here.
And then, what types of costs, prior to doing that, what types of costs is the city incurring?
So the two types of costs that you will definitely incur, whether you do a transaction or not, is the cost of the ad, as Brian referenced.
Fifteen hundred.
And, which is about $1,500. And then, you'll owe 70% of the rating fee. And the rating fee varies based on size. I would say a good estimate is about $30,000, give or take five.
So 70% of $30,000?
Seventy, yep. So those are the two fees that you would definitely incur.
The only additional cost, if we finish this process and set the filing down to DCED, there's a filing fee that's probably about another $1,200. And if interest rates just move away and you can't complete it, there is that filing fee as well.
Right. Those are the ones you definitely owe. And then, if we move forward and actually do our refinancing, the additional costs are legal counsel, PFM. There is a cost of doing the preliminary official statement, doing that prospectus document. There is a cost for the underwriter. We did an RFP process to determine that. And that cost is based on the size of the bond issue and then, the credit, the bond insurance fee.
So when will we have that all finalized?
It will be totally finalized on the day of pricing, because some of them are determined by the size of the bond issue. But we can have an estimate for you in about two weeks.
In about what?
In about two weeks, when we get the credit rating back and are able to get the bond insurance.
And there are already estimates of all of those things in the savings that you're seeing tonight?
Yes, we have netted those out.
So there are guesses as to what those are going to be, so.
I'm hoping that you're going to get a credit rating upgrade, and then, my estimate for bond insurance is conservative. Because as your, as your creditworthiness improves, the cost of that goes down.
Prior to us passing the ordinance, are you guys going out for our credit rating, or you needed pass prior to moving out?
We'll get the, we're going to have the credit rating call next week. And then, it takes about a week after that typically to get the rating itself.
So you're going to ask us to pass this prior to getting our credit rating and having everything finalized?
Yes.
And really, once again, that's just to essentially start that clock running with what we can do with DCED and get that 30-day window working so that you can get to market as soon as you possibly can. If you waited till all of those things were in place, you're probably in the mid-bait window to actually be able to close. And there's that, there's a payment in May on your old bond, so it does affect some of the pricing that you're looking at.
And how much savings you can realize this year. Any other questions that I can answer before Brian maybe talks about the ordinance?
So we should get our, our credit rating should be, we should be getting that next week, right?
In two weeks.
Two weeks.
We're meeting with them next week.
Yep.
Now, that will be available before we actually go to market and price the bonds. So the bondholders will want to know what that is, as well as the bond insurance companies, so.
So after two weeks, we should get the credit rating, and after that, then, we would have our full fee schedule, everything.
Yep.
If fee schedule interests, anything doesn't make sense, we're going to pull the plug and we're not going to do the, do the refinancing.
Yep. The beauty and the bad part of a refunding is you only do it if it saves you enough money.
I am happy to answer any questions on the ordinance. It is very similar to the debt ordinances that you've seen before, whether it was a bank loan or a bond issue. It really goes through everything that the local government in a debt act requires a municipal governing body to approve to issue debt. You know, it sets the amortization schedule. In this case, it's that max schedule. Authorizes the officers to sign the bond purchase agreement, file documents with the state, all the closing documents that have to be put in place. Authorizes the paying the cost of the premium for bond insurance. So it really just steps through everything that has to happen from tonight to get to closing and authorizes those pieces. Really similar to everything that you've seen before, because it is all driven by the debt act and what they need to see in there when we file it with the state. But as I mentioned before, two important points of this is the limitations that are in there. It is just the refunding of the one issue. There's no additional new money. There's no other refundings that are contemplated. And we cannot complete the transaction without sufficient savings so that we can then refile it with the state of what the final amortization is and what the final savings schedule is, too.
Anyone have any additional questions for Melissa or Brian?
I do. So we've retained you guys since Act 47, along with Pell. We have a finance director that was a fantastic child. We have a new BA. So I would just like your thoughts on the recent article that was in the paper, seeking another consultant for financial forecasting and projections. In your personal opinion, I mean, don't you think we have the expertise in-house now that would be able to do that? Look at a five-year, projecting budgets for five-year and forecasting? I mean, collectively, we have a great team. So I just posed that question, and well, to you guys as our financial advisors and the rest of the group.
So maybe I could talk about it from a rating agency perspective, because it's, I think it's kind of relevant to the credit rating conversation. So one thing that the rating agency looks at, I'm so sorry. Just wait a minute. Sorry. I know that distracts me.
Yeah.
One thing that the rating agency looks at is, are local governments thinking proactively and thinking long-term? Are you doing five-year forecasts, three-year or five-year forecasts? And they view that as a very positive, positive tool, right? Now, as to who does it, that's a city decision. Now, as to who does it, that's a city decision. But that act of doing that five-year forecast is a very, very credit-positive action. Is that helpful?
Okay, so I guess that, you know, it looks better on a report card if we do that, but I honestly believe that should be done in-house. We hire quite a bit of consultants. We retained you guys, which is great, and Pell. But I don't think, personally, I don't think we need another consultant to help us with that, like you just mentioned. I just wanted you to weigh in on it for me, so.
Yeah.
As our advisor. Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, I, well, Pell is here to help us out of 47, and this is beyond the scope of what they're underneath the stamp grant project now. You know, we didn't budget for them to do this type of work, because this is more in-depth work. They help us with the cash flows, they help us with the meetings, and they do help us with some advisory work. This will be a separate project, and we put it out there to see different consultants that would do it. We don't have the software in the city to do this, for myself to do it. For, for the city to do it inside, you know, we have, the workload is something that would take up time. And I think that independent entity doing it should give it more credibility to. You know, we have all the information in the RFP. We actually put it out there for them to actually look at it. Now they have the audits, they have the budgets, and they can use that, and that would be the basis. So it's just a matter of taking those projections for themselves and using their software that they have, because we don't have that type of capability in the city to do that through open guff, to make those projections.
In addition to Pell, PFM, as part of their engagement, that is not a service that is contracted with them as part of this current engagement. So neither Pennsylvania Economy League or PFM do that work for us currently.
So Matt, you wouldn't, this isn't something that we can just ask you to do. Do you have time to do this, to give us a five-year forecast and stuff? And you don't have, you're saying you don't have the software to do it. Do you have the manpower to do it?
No. I, the activities in the day, like, I get done at the end of the day, and I just wish I can finish what I started. But as the day rolls on, it's just, there's just so much going on, and for a project like this, I could never do it.
The bigger problem is, we don't have the tools to do it.
All right. Now, back to the financing and stuff. Do you feel that now is the proper time to do this? Do you think we're incorrect in proceeding now to redo the bonds at this time?
Yeah, I do, because we're hitting the benchmarks for the savings marks. And you'll see in the estimated rates that are in there on page seven, you know, they're just estimated to 3.9, because on page, you know, four or page six is the 5%. They're going to be close to that, you know, between now and the, in the next month, now where we are. You'll see some fluctuations, but I think the savings are going to be there. As Melissa has, they're on the page, it's about 1.1 expected now in savings that she has on page, what page was that, Melissa?
Five.
Page five. So that takes away a lot of, that's in the budget. You know, we had that built into the budget this year. This is going to be $1 million that are in the budget of revenue. We're going to be, that's not going to be expended on debt service, so we'll have that. As Melissa says, what do you do with that money that you save? You know, capital projects, something like that, and that's what we're looking at. You know, one of the things that we've mentioned at my, at the meetings that I conduct is doing a capital reserve fund. You know, that is something that, maybe this is something for that, you know, to help fund that, because they like to pull out the capital expenditures in the operating budget. So it's just showing operating expenses and have the capital reserve fund fund those out of a different fund. It's the same projects. The one, what you see now in the budget is really under Appendix A this year, is a lot of those capital projects, but that would be mostly under the capital reserve fund. But that's going to need funding from the source. This would be a way to help that fund. We did, the city council did approve for $300,000 to be transferred into that this year. So, and then the council could always take next year, when you're doing the budget, increase that. You know, as we're doing the budget, we'll put together, the opera, when we do the capital budget, we'll put together a spending plan, and that will be the expenditures for 2025 for capital. And then we'll see what that cost is, and then we can fund that from, depending on what the balance is in the capital reserve as we get this ordinance together and get initial funding sources into this. Next year, we can always fund money from the operating budget, because you won't have those capital expenditures into that capital reserve fund. But from an accounting perspective, you would have your capital projects coming from the capital fund, and your operating costs will be in your operating budget. You won't have those co-mingled as they are now.
And where you'll really see this is, we have to put matches for grants in the operating fund right now. If the grant doesn't actually have come to fruition, it's still in there, and it's counting on our expense side when, when it didn't actually really happen. So this will give us the opportunity to do matches and grant reimbursements outside of the operating budget using the capital fund. And Matt's been working really hard getting that legislation together, so hopefully that will be to council in the near future.
So any of these savings, we did say the savings are going to only be for the first year. So if we see these savings occur, it's going to be for 2025?
This year.
2024.
Yeah. If you just look at the debt service schedule that they've prepared, the debt service pretty much stays the same going forward after this year.
Yeah, the savings are just in year one.
Exactly.
This still has the same maturity rate of 2032.
Yep, and the same debt service.
Everything is the same, except the interest rates are down.
Same debt service, that's 25 to 32, and the same maturity date.
And even though we may be locking this in in April, the savings are going to be 2024 savings.
Correct.
And you're saying, roll that over into the capital next, for next year's budget? Is that what you were just explaining?
Yeah, well, capital fund will have its own fund. It would be a source of funding just for capital projects. And that money, if this, this is hypothetically, this is closed, and you had the 1.1 savings, that frees up a million dollars in this year's budget. Okay? Because we're not going to spend it. So we could do, at that time, is amend the budget. If, once the capital reserve fund, say, the disordinance is passed, and amend the budget and increase that $300,000 to 1.3, and make that transfer into the capital reserve fund. So then you have that funding over there. So that's where you're putting that savings in this year's budget into the capital reserve fund.
So you're saying if we realize these savings in 2024, these funds aren't going to be spent in 2024? They're going to be saved until '25, and they're going to be rolled over into the capital budget for?
Yeah. That capital reserve fund will be similar to the fund balance that you have in the operating budget now. You know, the cap, the, the fund balance at the end of the year keeps rolling. The PNC account keeps rolling, keep paying bills. This will be the same way. But it'll keep rolling. At the end of the, of a fiscal year, all the expenditures are done, there might be a balance in there to say a million dollars. It might be $500,000. But when we're doing the budget, capital budget process in the summer, in August, at that point, we'll be identifying those expenses, and we'll create our own capital expenditure, or capital budget at that time. And that's, say, there's only a million dollars, as we're doing the budget, there's $3 million in capital expenditures. We can use, when we look at, we're doing the budget, we can transfer that money into the capital expending, the plan for the capital reserve to cover those expenses. Because the capital budget is not effective until January 1st, even though you pass it in August or September. It becomes effective on the first day. And the capital budget, the way it is now, it's kind of like a five-year plan. It's kind of like the fiscal plan. So there's no really expenditures in there. When you see the 2024, you'll see like $9 million project, it gives you the full project amount, but we don't really say what the, the spending is, and that comes out usually in the operating budget. You'll see that, we, as we go into the process of operating budget, we're looking at the capital budget. What capital line items do we need? Let's fund it from the operating budget. What we want to be able to do is say, no, here is the five-year spending plan, but in 2025, you'll get, you'll, when we do the capital budget, you'll get a spending plan for 2025. It'll be capital projects. They're making sense? It's a new concept?
Because they won't sit in the operating budget.
Right. So you'll be making the 25, when you do the 2025 capital budget, there'll be a spending plan in there for 2025 for the capital projects. And as we go through that, really, when we do the capital budget, the two that I've done here, the department heads pretty much identify those 2025 capital projects, and they're pretty solid. By the time we get to the budget process, it's just a matter of funding them. So we're going to do it, setting up the capital reserve fund, we'll set up a spending plan with the capital budget for 2025, and that'll, you'll be approving a spending plan, it'll be incorporated as part of the budget. But then we do the 2025 operating budget, there won't be hardly any capital expenditures in there, because they'll be in that capital expenditure plan. And we'll be able to separate. So if somebody's looking at the operating budgets and say, this is an operating budget because there's no capital expenditures, it'll all be in that capital spending plan. Trying to clarify. You know, this is a concept going through the head, and this is a work in progress. You know, when I was doing the ordinance, putting it together, I went through so many permutations trying to get to where I'm at today. But, you know, I'm going to need work with you guys and Gal to get this to work, you know? So I want to get this moving as fast as possible so we can start creating the structure of these accounts. Because after I get the ordinance done, then we got to set up the accounts for all these capital projects. And I like to pretend that, use the 2024 as just a template and start identifying projects, and then run that through. By the time we get to the capital budget process in July and August, that we'll be ready to go and put the new projects in there.
And this will be an ordinance coming down later on, you're talking about?
Hopefully, hopefully soon. You know, I've been working on this really since January, and I pretty much have it where